Okay, everyone. Thank you for coming to join us with the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Meeting of July 2023. If everyone will please join me in a pledge of allegiance before we get started.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father of the United States of America, in the dear Republic for which he stands, one nation is God and God is the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and also please join me in putting those electronic devices to mute or silent for the duration of the hearing. First order of business, we'll move into approval of minutes. Can we go ahead and get, thank you, Mr. Haley. Do we have any changes, edits?
One second.
Oh, excuse me, look for a second, Mr. Hampton. Thank you. Changes, edits, updates to the minutes as distributed? All right, being none, we'll move to a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. First docket. Ms. Edgar, will you read the first docket?
Docket PG 23-013. An application has been filed by BBWD for the approval of a waiver for required sidewalks, Section 5.5 of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations. The property is located at Quail Ridge Drive and John Clark Drive, LaGrange. The property is owned R2 Residential in CO1 Conservation and known as Summit Park, Section 2.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fogel, you'll have the staff presentation.
Yes, a staff presentation here on the request for a waiver for the requirement of sidewalks on both sides of the street. Oh, Brian Fogel, Assistant Director. Notification of today's meeting was posted on our website. Joining property owners were notified and legal advertisement appeared in the Oldham area newspaper. The proposal, as you've heard right into the record, is for a waiver on sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Mr. Fogel, sorry.
Yes.
I lost my protocol.
Okay.
Let's get the staff sworn to begin with.
Do you solemnly swear, sorry, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fogel. Sorry to interrupt.
I lost my protocol this morning, too, without introducing myself. Summit Park is located east of LaGrange off Jericho Road, so right here is where Jericho Road crosses over 71. And as you're going out towards Henry County, Jericho Park, I'm sorry, Summit Park is located on the right-hand side of the road. One entrance is here on John Clark Drive. The other entrance is here on Summit Park Drive. The area you see highlighted in red there is the portion that we have the request for today. And you can see here with this particular photograph with the lot lines drawn on there, the request is for a sidewalk waiver on 13 lots, but there still would be sidewalks on the opposite sides of the street, therefore maintaining the sidewalk network in the neighborhood. The zoning in the area is primarily residential. There is a drainage area that's owned conservation. A lot of history to this that I was not aware of. You guys first heard this in 2006 is Jericho Point Subdivision, and it has start and stopped a lot since then, depending on probably business factors. But one of the things that's significant about the approval you all granted in 2006 is that you required that there would be a large earthen berm constructed along Jericho Road to shield the view of the subdivision off Jericho Road, and it's that landscaping berm that's at the rear portion of the lots where they're requesting a sidewalk waiver from. Then in 2008, the first section went to record allowing the construction of homes. In 2017, there was a revised preliminary plan approved for the subdivision that added 36 additional lots for a total of 228. In 2018, you all amended the binding elements basically to get the approvals that were granted in 2006 and in 2017 to agree with one another. There was some contradictory language in there. And then the past couple of things that have happened in May of last year and then March of this year are record plats creating more lots, allowing more homes to be built. With this request, they're still proposing to maintain the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, and the two streets that would be affected would be a portion of Quail Chase Drive and John Clark Drive. And that is highlighted here in red on this plan that they've submitted with the application. So the two lots that would be affected on John Clark Drive are right here. The entrance to the subdivision off Jericho Road is right there. And then the remaining 11 lots that would be affected along Quail Ridge Drive are highlighted in red here. And the second entrance to the subdivision is here on Summit Parks Drive. Couple photos to illustrate what it is that they're asking for. This is the entrance off of Jericho Road where John Clark Drive drops down into the subdivision. There is a grade difference between where Jericho Road's at and where the subdivision's at. This is looking down Quail Ridge Drive with lots of construction activity going on right now. The particular request that you're all looking at today would be this side of the road, right here. As you can see, on the opposite side of the road where there is a house that's finished, there already is an existing sidewalk, and the applicants are proposing to maintain that sidewalk throughout the entire length of Quail Ridge Drive. This is just looking in the opposite direction. And this is a couple shots of the earthen berm. This is the earthen berm here. The entrance on John Clark Drive and Jericho Road are right here, and you can see the difference in grade. Here's this dumpster right here that's actually sitting on John Clark Drive for the construction of the house right here. And dumpsters are pretty tall, so you can see the difference in the grade between the back of the lot and as you drop down towards the front of the lot. And then just a rear shot along the back of the lots that are on Quail Ridge Drive, showing again the difference in elevation between the berm here along Jericho Road and then the backs of the houses that are being constructed on Quail Ridge Drive right here. The Planning Commission is authorized to grant waivers from the subdivision regulations, such as the requirements for sidewalks on both sides of the street, when you find that there are either topographic or man-made conditions that justify the waiver. And the applicant has basically stated in their justification statement that there are a couple of things that are driving them to ask for this waiver in the sidewalk requirement. One would be the steep conditions that are kind of related to not only where Jericho Road is located at, but the fact that they were required to put in earthen berm along Jericho Road, creating some steep lots that dropped down toward Quail Ridge Drive. And then a man-made condition, the fact that with the starting and stopping of the development since 2006, a water line was constructed along Quail Ridge Drive where the sidewalk would go. So LaGrange Utilities has looked at that and said, well, that's not an ideal situation, that if in the future there would be a need to repair that water line, we'd have to go in and demolish the sidewalk. That basically concludes the staff presentation. It'll take any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Fogel. Jim, do you have something to add for us? Thank you.
Good morning. Jim Silman, county engineer. Just want to, I guess, concur with the developer and the applicant in their request and their justification that based on the topography that we've observed, in order to provide, well, because of the topography, it would be challenging to provide a usable sidewalk, much less one that meets ADA accessibility guidelines, and driveways that are usable, because the grade breaks between the usable sidewalk and the new driveway would be just unmanageable for most cars. So we concur with this request. And given the sidewalk that's being constructed on the opposite side of the street, it doesn't appear to impede the overall walkability of the neighborhood, considering the sidewalks that are going to be constructed in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Silman. Anything additional from staff? Okay, we will move into presentation from applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Urban, Mr. Baxter, Ms. Edgar, good morning, everybody. My name is Mike Swansburg, and I'm an attorney at the law firm of Swansburg and Smith, located at 117 West Main Street, just on the other side of the courthouse here in LaGrange. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning and to represent for you all BBWD LLC, which is the owner and developer, the applicant, if you will, of this particular request. Both Mr. Fogel and Mr. Silman did an excellent job of talking through initially with you about why it is that we're here for this purpose this morning and seeking that waiver. If I can, Mr. Chairman, I've got a draft motion to approve waiver of the regulations. Don't mean to be presumptuous, but always wanted to be helpful to the extent I can be for the commission members to look through and to follow along, at least from the perspective of the applicant, and why it is we were asking you all to approve this particular request. I don't want to necessarily add too much at this moment to what the staff has already commented on. If I can, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, for the sense of protocol as well, go ahead and swear myself in, and as well have Mr. Vinsan, the engineer, to the extent he also needs to testify, make sure that we are able to do that in accordance with the expectations of the commission.
Yes, sir.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, again, thank you. So as I always like to start off with, as being a lawyer, the question is, well, what's the law here in Kentucky, and why does this matter, and what is the legal import, and is there substantial evidence for you all to make a determination such that it can in fact be upheld in the event of an appeal of some kind, I guess, again, from the perspective of the developer? General background purposes, as Mr. Fogel's already talked about, in and around September of 2006, this body had already approved a preliminary subdivision plan with 19 binding elements, known as the Jericho Point, later to be Summit Park. And one of those binding elements, as already discussed, was the construction of that landscaping berm that you saw in those photos. And in and around May 2021, the developers received a record plat approval for 28 lots located in what is known as Section 2 of Summit Park. That's that strip right along Jericho Road that you saw in the picture, where it is immediately adjacent to that landscape berm that you, again, saw the pictures of. Again, why does it matter? Well, Oldham County Subdivision Regulation, Section 5.5, provides that, quote, "sidewalks shall be required on both sides of all public streets that are located in an incorporated city and on both sides of all public streets in unincorporated areas where the average lot frontage is 100 feet or less," end quote. So that's Section 5.5 of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations. And as we'll talk about a little bit more here, Mr. Vinsan's going to give you more of a rundown about the technical reasons and further explain what Mr. Fogel's already talked to you about this morning in terms of those issues that we've had, in terms of the need for this particular waiver. And again, pointing out to Oldham County Subdivision Regulation, Section 9.1 SubA, that particular regulation provides that where, quote, "strict compliance with these regulations would create an undue hardship because of exceptional topographic or other natural or man-made physical conditions encountered on the particular land, the commission may waive the requirements of the regulations to the extent necessary to relieve the undue hardship." That's what we are asking you all to do, is to take into account, as Mr. Vinsan's going to talk about here in a second, those topographical and man-made obstacles that are preventing, or at least from our perspective, preventing what would otherwise be an appropriate sidewalk construction in this subdivision, and why we're asking you all to waive the regulations at least to one half of the roads, two roads that we're talking about today, Quail Ridge Drive and the west side of Jacob Clark Drive. That's all we're talking about today, is just those two particular areas. And what we're asking you all, again, is to waive the regulation requiring sidewalks to be on both sides. There will be sidewalks at least on one side, but we're asking you to waive it as to both sides. And if I can, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Vinsan to come up and talk a little bit here, having the mood been set for Mr. Vinsan, about the technicalities of why it is, at the end of the day, we are asking this waiver.
Bobby, this is pretty ominous, so, you know, consider us all duly impressed.
I don't have that much control. Good morning.
We've already sworn you.
That's right. I'm Bob Vinsan with Vinsan Engineering and Land Surveying, 1000 Cherrywood Place, Suite 200, LaGrange. And I am a professional land surveyor and professional engineer licensed in the state of Kentucky. One thing before I get started, I did want to make, clarify, BBWD was not the original developer. They are not the developer that built the berm of which we're talking about, which has created a part of the problem. As a matter of fact, that berm is very large. There was a massive amount of dirt that was stripped from the site in order to build that berm. An unfortunate side effect of that was a lot of that site was left bare. And if you don't know, there was a long history going all the way to the federal EPA regarding this project, and BBWD did take it on. They spent hundreds of thousands of dollars removing a pipe that was illegally placed, fill that was in the wrong places, and mitigating a lot of the problems that were on this site. So I just wanted to make that point clear to start with. A lot of what I'm going to say has already been addressed by Brian and Jim. I appreciate them making their comments, but we are requesting a waiver of the subdivision regulation 5.5 that requires sidewalks on both sides of the streets in incorporated cities. Constructions of sidewalks on the north side of Quail Ridge Drive and the west side of John Clark Drive are not feasible due to the topographic conditions. Again, when the subdivision was first constructed in 2003, a massive landscape berm was constructed on the south side of Jericho Road. This berm has created steep slopes that have made constructing home sites in the area difficult. Ultimately, the building pads have been constructed above the road, requiring driveways with steep slopes. Okay, so the second issue is the required sidewalk cannot be constructed in the right of way without being over top of the existing water line. Scott Treese with LaGrange Utilities has requested that we do not construct sidewalks over the top of the existing water line. This is because future maintenance and repairs of the water line would create costly repairs due to removal and replacement of sections of the sidewalk. And I have an email from Scott to this effect. And in summary, in his email, it says it would be beneficial to LaGrange Utilities and our customers not to have sidewalks placed over the main, and we will request that they not be installed there. Yes. So if required, the constructed sidewalks would create a hazard to both pedestrians and vehicles due to the requirements to meet ADA standards. The resulting driveways would create a significant bump in the area of the sidewalk, and that would cause vehicles with low clearance to scrape the bottom of the vehicle, thereby damaging both the vehicle and the driveway. We also believe the steep slopes created above the sidewalks create a hazard to children on bicycles and riding toys due to the abrupt change in slope. So what we're talking about here is, this is one profile of an existing house that has been constructed with a driveway. That existing driveway is approximately a 20% grade from the turnaround pad down to the curb. If we were to have to construct the sidewalk, the grade from the pad, the turnaround pad, down to the upper end of the sidewalk would increase to a 27% from a 20. The sidewalk would be constructed on a 2% slope for a distance of four feet, and then it would go down to a 16% slope down to the sidewalk. And what I've tried to represent here with the two red circles and the line underneath, that is a profile of a low clearance automobile. The bottom of the car would be about five inches. That's typical, five to six is the clearance on low vehicles. And you can see there, as it would go up and cross over the front side of the sidewalk, that potentially it would scrape the bottom of the car. It should be noted that sidewalks are being constructed on the opposite side of the streets as required, and will provide adequate connectivity to the neighborhood. And just as a final note, in our conversations with Mr. Treese, we have agreed to expand the road right of way in the future sections of Summit Park from 50 feet to 60 feet, and then that additional five feet on each side will give us more clearance in dealing with topographic issues and be another to construct the water line actually in the road right of way. That concludes our testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Vinsan.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I don't know if those two documents that Mr. Vinsan showed you all are part of the record. I would like, that's my request, if I can, Mr. Chairman, is to move to admit those two documents, both the email from Mr. Treese and the layout that Mr. Vinsan talked about as part of the record of this case. And so again, I don't want to, I don't want to necessarily rehash what's already been said multiple times here in front of everybody else, but just to kind of summarize at this point. Again, there was a, there was a project that was originally approved by this body back in 2006. At that time, there was a requirement for a landscape berm to be constructed as part of that, a binding element of that particular construction plant. And then when the project got underway and eventually became a Section 2, the berm that was required originally actually became an issue for the construction of the buildings, in that it created a topographical situation whereby you had, as Mr. Vinsan talked about and testified, there's a significant grade that's going to require, in many ways, some type of accommodation within each driveway that is going to either create a situation with the Americans with Disabilities Act for sidewalks, or it's going to create a situation with each driveway whereby you're going to have cars bottoming out on individuals' driveways, creating both damage to vehicles and damage to the driveways themselves, ultimately frustrating the purpose of a driveway for each individual. So again, the regulation generally provides that sidewalks must be constructed on both sides. What the applicant is asking you all to do today pursuant to Section 9.1A of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations is to provide a waiver of that regulation because strict compliance would create an undue hardship due to the existing topographical and other natural or man-made physical conditions, which have already been discussed by multiple individuals and testified to by multiple individuals today, encountered on that land. And you all have the ability and may in fact waive that regulation to allow the developers to forego constructing sidewalks on the north side of Quail Run Drive and the west side of Jacob Clark Drive. And we would ask you all to provide that waiver accordingly. And Mr. Chairman, of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions from commission members at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Swansburg. We'll get to that. Is there anyone else present who would wish to speak in support of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in support? I don't believe we've gotten you sworn. We'll need to get you sworn in first.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Costello. I'm with Fisher Homes, the builder. Our office is located at 2301 Terra Crossing Boulevard in Louisville.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Good morning. Like I said, I'm the builder that is building the homes on these 13 lots in question, and I just want to echo support for everything that's been mentioned. Really, the largest concern is that the driveways, if required to have sidewalks, would mostly be unusable. It's just probably not the right thing to do in that situation. And our ultimate concern is that residents of those homes would be parking on the street, and I don't think that's what anyone really wants either. So just here to echo support for everything that's been mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please approach. We'll need to get you sworn too.
Walt Shum, 1000 Cherrywood Place, LaGrange, Kentucky 40031.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm the managing partner of BBWD, the developer for this subdivision. We've done quite a lot of work over the years to take care of the issues that were left by the previous developer. This sidewalk situation was unforeseen by us when we constructed that particular section of the subdivision, and therefore I think we have done all we can to mitigate this. We had hoped that Mr. Treese would allow us to put the sidewalk over the water line, but that is not to be done. So I would speak in favor of this for Fisher Homes. We're not building any homes. I'll change hats briefly and say, as a builder in Brentwood, I did build a driveway and sidewalk on a lot that a customer had purchased, and we ran into this exact same issue. I went back twice, tore the driveway out one time, tore the sidewalk out the second time. And in order to satisfy the customer whose tailpipe was dragging and ultimately torn off, we had to take the sidewalk out of ADA compliance, which rendered it fairly useless on that slope. So I would suggest, having practical experience, that this request for a waiver is reasonable and that you've seen all the and that you've seen all the engineering evidence to the same. Thank you very much for your consideration. We certainly appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schum. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? If there being none, then we'll move into questioning and testimony of those opposed to the application. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition or has questions? All right, being none, we'll move into questions from the commission. Who has questions? Mr. Finney.
I have a question for, I guess, Mr. Vincen. What will be the access to the sidewalk on the other side of the street for the houses that will have no sidewalk?
Well, they would just simply cross the street.
Will there be, will they have to, what, cross the curbing, then across grass, and then into the sidewalk, or will there be a?
Yeah, yeah, they could do that, but we're building handicap accessible ramps at the intersections as well. So they could either walk down the road, or they could walk across. And they would be in the road right of way, so they're not, it's not a trespass, if that's what you're asking.
No, I wasn't asking about trespass. I was just asking what would be adequate access to the sidewalk.
Thank you.
That's good.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Fair enough. All right. Mr. Swansburg.
Mr. Chairman?
Structure of the hearing has us in rebuttal. Do you have any rebuttal on that?
I've not heard anything to rebut, so, Mr. Chairman.
Fair enough.
I think I'll take a seat.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Don't sit down. Don't sit down. Don't sit down.
Oh, I apologize.
I'll take your final statement now.
I apologize. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we've already talked pretty much at length about what it is we're asking to do. Ultimately, again, we're asking the commission to provide a waiver of subdivision regulation Section 5.5 to allow the builders to move forward with the construction of this development without the need to construct the sidewalks on the north side of Quail Ridge Drive and the west side of Jacob Clark Drive as submitted. Based on the testimony that we've heard today, we believe that there is substantial evidence for this commission to make that determination, and we would respectfully ask you all to move accordingly. And, Mr. Chairman, with that, I will sit down now.
Please sit down. Thank you. Mr. Urban, can you frame this up for us, please?
Sure. As always in your staff report, there's a recommended motion to either approve or deny. It's on page four. I'd ask you to consider on page three that the applicant's justification statement for the waiver is summarized, and they also passed out a motion to approve the waiver of the regulations. If you're so inclined to approve it, you can use that as justification. So again, this is a motion for a waiver for the sidewalk requirements. You've heard all the information.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Okay, commissioners, floors.
There is three potential binding elements with this approval. One, there should be no significant changes. The requested sidewalk waiver is presented at the July 25, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing without review and approval of the commission. The second is the sidewalk shall be constructed on the opposite side of Quail Chase Drive and John Clark Drive to maintain the pedestrian network and Summit Park subdivision. And the third is the plan must comply with all established federal, state, and local ordinances and requirements. Those are pretty standard.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. All right, floor is now open for motions. Mr. Falvey.
Yes, I'll move to approve the requested sidewalk waiver under PZ 23-013. It doesn't seem like it'll create a detriment. It will not create a detriment to the public good and will not impair the purposes, basic objectives, and intent of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations. That's 9.1A. Additionally, I find that an exceptional hardship exists on this particular land due to the topographic and/or man-made physical conditions. I would like to incorporate in my motion the conditions for approval that Jim Urban spoke to.
Thank you, Mr. Falvey. Mr. Baxter, do we have an adequate motion on the floor?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ender, thank you. We will, unless there are questions, any questions, move into a roll call vote.
Ms. Davis? Yes. Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hafling?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion has carried on a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. Swansburg, your application has been approved. And that will conclude with this application. If everybody's good, we're just going to roll with the next docket item. Ms. Edgar, when you're ready.
Docket PZ 23-014. An application has been filed by Crestwood Ventures LLC for the approval of a zoning map amendment and associated development plan and a conditional use on approximately 20.54 acres. The property is located at 7505 Cavanaugh Road, Crestwood, and the requests are to allow the redevelopment of the property into short-term rental lodging in a private club and event venue. The proposed change is from CO1 Conservation/Residential District and R2 Residential District to a C2 Commercial Community Business District.
Mr. Fogel, you have the staff presentation.
Yes. And Jim Siliman also will have comments after the official PowerPoint presentation related to the technical review committee meeting that we've had. As Ms. Edgar read into the record, this is a request for a change of zoning on property that if you have any type of ties to Oldham County, you know is Camp Cavanaugh on Cavanaugh Road, and then also a conditional use request that would be associated with the overall redevelopment of the property. Notification of today's hearing was posted on our website. Adjoning property owners were notified. A legal advertisement appeared in the Oldham Mirror, and a zoning change sign was posted on the property in accordance with the requirements. The proposal, as we've discussed, is a change of zoning, a conditional use. Additionally, associated with the development plan, there would be a request for a parking lot waiver. And then, as you guys do with every change of zoning, you put a development plan on there, so you have some certainty of how the property would be developed. The location is off Cavanaugh Road, highlighted here in red. Downtown Crestwood, right here. The entrance, right by the Crestwood United Methodist Church, right here off of 146 of the Red Road Avenue crossover, is right here. The entire property is actually 30 acres, but the only portion that's before you guys today would be what's highlighted in red. And it probably shows up better on this particular map, where you see there's a portion to the north that's not part of this application, and a portion to the south that's not part of this application. With this aerial, and we will show you some photographs, you see that there's a number of buildings. The proposal's not proposing to construct any new buildings, certainly some lot improvements and some very significant improvement to some vacant and ran-down buildings. And we'll show you pictures of those, but right now, just here, this is what we're going to be referring to, is the lodge building. There's five smaller houses here that we'll be making reference to. And then the other significant component is right here, the tabernacle building. And as we get into the presentation, we'll explain what the applicant's proposals are for each of those buildings. The zoning in the area is primarily residential. There is conservation zoning along the drainage way, so the proposal is with what's highlighted in red to a request to change that to C2 to allow the short-term rental properties and then the conditional use to allow the wedding event center. The overall property is highlighted in yellow. This is their development plan. It's a pretty busy development plan, so we're just going to break it down into a few components to help explain to you all what the particular request is. Again, the overall site is right into the record, is 20.54 acres. There's not a lot of governmental review and approval history with this property because basically it was built out and developed as Camp Cavanaugh prior to the mid-'70s, when there would have been a requirement for any type of building permits. But it has been used up until the early 2000s as part of the United Methodist Church's Kentucky Conference Center. They built a new location off Floydsburg Road that this backs up to. And the little bit of review that there has been by Oldham County Government would be we did approve a minor plat in November 2021, creating the properties. The applicants had a first neighborhood meeting in April of 2023, a second neighborhood meeting this month, and then they did go to the technical review committee this month also. The technical comments will be addressed by Jim Siliman, the county engineer. So the specific request on the zoning map amendment is to go from conservation in R2 to C2 to allow non-owner occupied short-term rental properties. And you see in parentheses there, it says hotel. The applicants can probably explain very well that it's not a traditional hotel in the way that you think of, a Holiday Inn or something like that, but we had to call it something under the zoning ordinance to guide them through the development and review process. And then the conditional use to operate a wedding event on the property that's affiliated with the short-term rental property. So the first thing we're going to look at is just the general location, and the photographs probably make more sense than this. We're going to show you some photographs. Cavanaugh Road is right here. The property is highlighted in yellow. And this is looking towards the property from the Crestwood area, where the cars are congregated here is the entrance to the property. And then we just switch the view, looking from the Cherry Lane area back towards Crestwood, and the entrance is right here behind these cars. There's the entrance to the property. This is when you walk or drive onto the property. To your right is the former dining hall, right here. To the left is the lodge building that we'll be talking about here shortly. And then when you look back up towards Cavanaugh, at the entrance, Cavanaugh Road would be right here. And then when you look down, down the property towards Floydsburg Road, where the United Methodist Church's Conference Center is at, it's located behind the woods here, and there is pedestrian connections to that property, but there's not vehicular connections. The first component we're going to talk about are the short-term rentals, which is what's driving the request for the change of zoning. So they're proposing to put short-term rentals in the former lodge building here, and then these five buildings, depending on if they're structurally sound, short-term rental properties in there. So this is a front view of the former lodge building, a back view of the former lodge building, and just pulling away from it a little bit, you get a sense of the size of the particular building. As it exists right now, it has the space for 27 rental units. I believe the applicants will probably explain to you all that that's not what they're interested in, maintaining that number of rental units. And then looking at the lodge from across the lake, then there are five buildings, four of which I believe they're proposing to convert to short-term rentals on the property. The conditional use request is for the wedding event venue, which would be in the tabernacle building, which is highlighted here in yellow, and just a few photos of it. It's a pretty big building. They can go into the specifics of how they're proposing to remodel that and shore it up. Typically, when the applicants give us a justification, we try to summarize it for you. You can see what's on the screen there. Their justification is pretty involved, so I'm going to leave that to the applicants to explain their justification for the property versus trying to summarize it. And then just in summary, you know, the request is for the zoning map amendment to allow the short-term rentals, the conditional use to allow the wedding event venue, but then related to that would be a parking lot waiver, because where the parking is located at up front here would require a waiver. And then what you all do with every change of zoning is a development plan. So when we get to the part of today's public hearing where you're all ready to discuss whether you approve or deny these requests, we're going to have four motions that will need to be made. And those are outlined in your staff report, but what we're proposing to do today, because it is a little bit of a complicated case, is when we get to that part, we'll just put each individual motion to either approve or deny and any potential binding elements or conditions back up on the screen for you all to work from. That concludes my portion of the staff presentation. Mr. Siliman has some comments, and I'll yield the microphone to him.
Thank you, Mr. Fogel. Mr. Siliman.
Jim Siliman, Oldham County Engineer. Good morning. What Brian's passing out to you is, I felt the easiest way to address our engineering department review comments was, at the recent TRC meeting, we had provided a letter with review comments. And so what you're being given is that TRC review comment letter with supplemental notes, which the applicant has addressed recently. So there should be, in blue italic bracketed text, notes addressing each of those previous comments. Do you see those? Okay, great. So part of these comments, I guess, stemmed or initiated from, when you look at the development plan, the engineer and the applicant had shown the parking surface, and they depicted it with the entire area showing how it would be laid out. When we measured that, it resulted in a disturbance area of over an acre. However, at TRC, the applicants explained that actually, again, that's just a representation of the final product, but most of that parking area, since it's existing, does not have to be disturbed. So what you see on the development plan is the actual calculation of the disturbed area, which is just under an acre. And at just under an acre, that puts us below the threshold that would require the stormwater quality management and erosion control permit from the county. Were they to be over an acre, it would involve that permit, KYR-10 permit from the state, and also addressing the construction site runoff and post-construction runoff ordinances for the county. So being under an acre eliminates some of those requirements that were noted in that first TRC letter. So that negates, we'll say, items one and two. Now, if for some reason they come to us with construction plan drawings, and that has changed, we would then require, make those requirements and address that during construction plan review. But at this time, it does not seem to be the case. Item three had to do with parking data, which has been provided. Item four had to do with also some parking issues and setback. That was addressed on the current plan you have. Item five also was addressed. It had to do with shared parking, which is not a consideration, it appears. Items six and seven, we were discussing the surface Items six and seven, we were discussing the surface type of the parking lot. Oldham County subdivision regulations require a paved surface. This is part of their waiver and what I'll let them request. What they're proposing is that the ADA parking spaces or the accessible parking spaces be paved and an entrance be paved with concrete likely, and the rest remain gravel as it is. And the additional parking area be gravel also. So again, I'll let them address that. Number nine, simply regarding the design of that commercial entrance. And we can coordinate that with the applicant during construction phase. Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, all again would stem or be associated with the stormwater quality management erosion control permit. And again, go away if this is less than an acre of disturbance. Number 14 was addressed with the revised plan. Number 15 gets into the road condition, the existing road, Cavanaugh Road, and trips generated from the site, similar to what we're seeing with the short-term rental and it not having a clear classification yet. The wedding event venue and short-term rentals do not have a classification in the Institute for Transportation Engineers Manual, where we get our peak trip hour, trip generations in order to assess the traffic that's generated. So what we're looking at is a close fit. Based on some research I did online in coordination with the applicant's engineer, a church venue seems to meet that because of the way hours and events are established. So utilizing the nearest fit trip generation model, this does generate a relatively low peak hour trips, which is what we use for analysis. However, understanding there is some new trips, there are some new trips generated, and this is a relatively narrow road, 15 to 16 feet wide, they are proposing shouldering on their side of the road. The other, the last item just simply had to do with the site distance for the entrance as it is. And based on criteria that we utilize from the Ash Toe Manual, it appears that they can meet the minimum stopping site distance for this. And again, we will coordinate that with them during construction for any clearing or modifications that are required.
Thank you, Mr. Silman.
Thank you.
Does that conclude staff's testimony? Fair enough. We will move into presentation from applicant, Mr. Ashburner. Do you want us to get your entire team, anyone who's going to be providing testimony sworn in before you roll in?
I think that would be a very good idea, Mr. Chairman. Guys.
Raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Cliff Ashburner. I'm with Dinsmore &amp; Shoal. We're located in Louisville, 101 South Fifth Street, Suite 2500. I'm here today on behalf of Crestwood Ventures to talk to you all about this change in zoning. As you all know, and I think as Brian alluded to in his comments, Camp Cavanaugh, or the Cavanaugh, as we hope it'll be called in the future, is, it's a special place, and it is sort of an island just to the south of Crestwood. It has been used, you hear it okay?
Make sure you're coming across clearly.
Better?
Oh, yeah.
It has been used as, you know, the retreat center for the United Methodist Church for a long time. And what it has, the physical assets that it has, the pond, the buildings, the gathering spaces, the tabernacle, the lodge, are currently just kind of sitting there empty. So it's a, when you face a situation like this where you have sort of a unicorn property that's been used in the way that this property has been used for as long as it has, it's a little bit of a challenge to figure out, okay, how are we going to reuse the property? Are we going to reuse it kind of in keeping with what's been there and with what the community has expected from that property for a very long time? Or are we going to dramatically change the use? And the proposal that Crestwood Ventures has got before you today really is to minimally change the property, minimally change the use. It's no longer going to be a church retreat center. That day has passed. But it can still be a place of gathering. It can still be a place that is open space within the community that's not generating a lot of traffic as Mr. Silman just mentioned during like the AM peak hour. And obviously, if you were to redevelop the property with a dramatically different use, like housing or commercial use or an office use, you wouldn't be able to say that. So we think that the reuse that we're talking about today really is in keeping with what Camp Cavanaugh was, understanding that now it's going to be a, you know, a for-profit venture. And so it's going to be operated a little bit differently. So with that, I'd like to, I'm going to go through some slides. Corey Adkinson with Crestwood Ventures is here. He can answer questions to the extent that the planning commission has some about operations. I did want to mention Corey is a partner in 314 Exchange, which is an event and wedding venue in Pee Wee Valley already, actually not too, too far from the subject property. That venue also includes a short-term rental. That's kind of part of the package there. And so I think the thought is, this is an opportunity to have larger events with more people staying on site. Also have Mark Madison here with me and Sophia Mazaco, who's with Milestone, who can answer questions about the plan. So with that, as I mentioned before, this is sort of a, I'm not sure this is the best term, but it is sort of a unicorn property. It's surrounded by residential and other uses. You can see at the top of the photo here, kind of the heart of Crestwood. You can see the subject property there, kind of in the middle. As was mentioned, a significant portion of this property is not subject to this application. And it is not, not before you today. What we're really trying to do today is address what kind of the core of the Camp Cavanaugh property. And this is what that looks like now. You can see, and I guess, is my cursor visible to the members of the commission? Okay.
Yes.
So you can see the parking area here. This is the dining hall. This is the Lodge Building that will house the majority of the short-term rental units. Here's the Tabernacle Building, the McCoy House. There's a couple of cabins behind that. And you have a couple of houses here. One of these will be removed. The unfortunate truth about Camp Cavanaugh is that based on its vacancy and the length of time that it has been vacant, some of the buildings are in pretty tough shape. There's been storm damage and there's been human damage. We had our second neighborhood meeting, which was the one that I attended recently, in the dining hall building. You know, there was a broken window. And in some of the other smaller buildings, there's been some other vandalism that's occurred on the property. So we think that getting the property active is going to be a benefit to everybody involved, including, you know, including the applicant, but also the community at large. So this is the property. There's the lake. Just up here is the newer Retreat Center or Conference Center of the Methodist Church. So this is the existing parking lot on the left. The proposal is to, as I said, maintain the look and feel of the property as much as possible. And so that will include maintaining the gravel parking lot. There'll be new wheel stops that are put in to clearly mark where people are supposed to park. And over by the dining hall building, there will be ADA compliant spaces. Those will be paved, and then ADA compliant access to the tabernacle will be provided as well. I'll go on to that on the plan in a little bit. This is what you see when you come into the property, so you can kind of tell where you're going. The Foman Lodge is the Lodge Building. The dining hall over to the right, you've got the other cottages there, and then the McCoy House and the Tabernacle. So this is the dining hall building from the interior of Camp Cavanaugh. And I took these pictures in this way just because it really does show, as I said, how special a place this is. The large trees that are there, the open spaces, and the camp-like feeling between the buildings, that's all designed to be maintained. There's the McCoy House. And you can see there the cabins in the back. Those cabins, you can see a tarp on top of one of them. That was some storm damage that's going to have to be fixed up in the interior will have to be fixed up. There's been a little bit of water damage in that building. Over to the right, just off this photo, is where the tabernacle is located. And you can see the tabernacle there. Tabernacle is currently open air. So there are some climate-controlled portions of the building, kind of at one end, smaller enclosed areas there. But the majority of that space is open on either side. Because it's open on either side and because it's open to the weather on either side, there's going to have to be, you know, a pretty significant investment in the Tabernacle Building. And Crestwood Ventures is aware of that. But again, it's one of those things that you just probably couldn't replicate or it would be very difficult to replicate if you tried to build it from scratch. So we look forward to that building being rejuvenated. These are the two homes on the property, cottages. The one on the right here, we think is in too dire shape to really to be reused. The one over here will be reused. And just to kind of orient you, if you haven't been on the property in a while, the parking lot is right about here off the screen. So this is one of the, on the left side here is one of the cabins behind McCoy Chapel House. Then this is the backside of Foman Lodge. What I, I wanted to show you this photograph just because Foman Lodge, when you come into the property, you only see the first floor of it, and it really does not appear that large. As it sits, as it was constructed, there are 27 kind of hotel room-sized units in the building. The proposal is to reduce that number from 27 down to 12. So combining several of the rooms. And we think that that will be, that will create really nice spaces for people to come and stay, whether they're there with a wedding or not. And what's important here, and this was in Brian's slide deck, is that this back section looks out over the pond. So again, it's just one of those special places. It's a really nice opportunity to have people have a nice little oasis, if you will, back there in the woods. Here again is that open-air tabernacle that I mentioned before. The pews are still there. Lots of, there's still some photos. There are several big boards with photos of different events that have occurred there over the years. But, you know, it's going to need some TLC to get it back into shape. And that's what Crestwood is proposing. So here is an opportunity to just kind of orient you to the entire property. So this is that lodge we talked about. Here's the existing pond. This is the parking area. It is shown as striped. That's really for informational purposes. The marking, the designation of where people will park will be achieved by those wheel stops. You've got the dining hall here. Some proposed short-term rentals back in this, in these cabins. You've got the tabernacle. This home is shown to be removed. And you've got parking over here. So this is a closer-up version of the plan. I'll leave that up there just for a minute. The proposal to rezone was not the initial proposal. We'd initially proposed a conditional use permit that would have allowed short-term rentals as well as the private, private club slash event venue. Upon evaluation of the number, the kind of the size of the property and the number of short-term rentals, Mr. Urban and Mr. Fogel determined that it was probably better to rezone the property for that purpose, just based on the number of short-term rentals that were possible on the property. Even though it's a reduction from 27 to 12 in the lodge, and then even if you add in the others that are there, you're still at a net reduction in terms of the lodging rooms that are available. But in doing that, we wanted to do, in kind of changing course, after filing the conditional use permit application, we also wanted to connect with the community, first to let them know what was going on. And we did that through a community meeting that was held recently. During that community meeting, there were concerns that were raised about traffic primarily, the use of the property again as an event venue. But as you heard Mr. Silman say, during the peak hour, that's not going to be an issue. And really, if you were to, you know, snap your fingers and go back to the time that the church was using the property, when they had a gathering, there were lots of folks who showed up to the property as well. So we don't really view that as a significant change. In spite of the fact that we don't think there's really a significant change there, as you also heard Mr. Silman testify, we are agreeing to expand Cavanaugh Road through the shoulder improvements. And we're agreeing, we have agreed to, and I believe it's now a note on the development plan, to address site distance from the entrance down onto Cavanaugh in order to make sure that that's a safe condition for everybody involved. In addition, so I've talked about this before. The layout and the structures are going to be essentially the same. They're going to be rejuvenated, renovated, really brought back to standard. We had proposed prohibiting certain uses. The staff, in the staff report, proposed an affirmative binding element, saying these are the only permitted uses. The only thing that I would address there is that within the list of permitted uses, short-term rental slash hotel was not included in that list in your staff report. So if you do desire to make a motion to support the rezoning, I would ask that you just include that one use. I think that was just a typo, because that is the use that we're asking for. As was mentioned in the technical comments, we are increasing, the net increase in impervious surface is really minimal. It's much less than, it's less than a quarter acre. And obviously, if that changes between now and the time of construction plans for some reason, then all the other permitting requirements that would be triggered by the addition of impervious surface will be complied with. We are removing 15 out of 27 units that are located in the lodge. So there'll be a net decrease in the lodging area on the property. And in our justification, I've tried to simplify the justification for you. Really, it's this property located where it is and with its historic use is going to be a challenge for anybody. And what Crestwood Ventures, the route that it has chosen, is to minimally modify the property physically and really minimally change the historic use. It's no longer going to have the religious affiliation, but it is going to be a place of gathering. It is going to remain a focal point for the community. And we think that the off-site impact of the use will be very similar to the way that the use was before. So I think with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have, or Mark, Sophia, Corey, if there's anything you'd like to add.
We'll circle back to questions if that concludes your application.
That does.
And we'll move along. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the? this application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? All right. With none, we will move along to those opposed or those with questions regarding this application. Anyone wish to provide opposition testimony or ask questions? I'm going to ask for everyone who wants to ask questions or provide testimony to stand and be sworn, and we'll gather your name and address as you approach the podium.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Let's get your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brian Heitzman, and I live at 6012 Cherry Lane on Crestwood, Kentucky. My lot, I received a letter in the mail for this application, but my lot is not adjoining the property. However, the, the way that the situation is where Camp Cavanaugh is, everything that goes on up there flows down that valley that I live in, so the noises, the noise level can be heard. I mean, over the years, you know, it's not been a major problem, but over the years, when they've had major events, we've, you know, you sit outside, you hear everything that's going on up there. So my concern is, if you're going to change this to a wedding venue, especially if it becomes very popular, I mean, what are the problems going to be with the noise levels?
Thank you. Of course, we're going to get the applicant to respond to those questions. Mr. Ashburner?
No.
Hang on, Mr. Ashburner. I jumped the gun here. We'll do that in rebuttal. Fair enough. All right. So he will respond to that rebuttal. Do you have any further questions? Nothing further.
My name is Tom Cardell. I live at 7335 Cavanaugh Road. I've got a couple of things. First of all, the area which we live in right now, a lot of the elderly people have moved out. They've sold the property to younger families, and I see a lot of the families with younger children in strollers, walking down the road. They come down my Cavanaugh Road all the time, and I see that. If we have a function back there, the traffic is going to be outrageous. They're looking for a venue of a large amount of people. So if they have a wedding back there of 200 people, where some of these are like that, we, that's going to allow a lot of traffic on Cavanaugh Road. Now, as it comes up to the meat market, they're meeting LaGrange Road. If they're wishing to turn left, there is, that's almost impossible at times, because a lot of traffic cuts through, cuts around the other lines of traffic to turn left over the railroad tracks. So we've had a lot of trouble with that. We're still having trouble with that. We, we've got a quiet little place over there where we live, and we enjoy it. It's quiet. It's peaceful. I can sit out on the front porch and just listen to the birds and the trees and the bees and everything. I don't hear a lot of people. I saw on the Today Program a few days ago, where they were talking about the weddings that are going on, and they're not being able to accommodate them in, on weekends. So in turn, a lot of these weddings are going to weekdays and not weekends. I just feel there's going to be a lot of traffic, a lot of noise. You know, when you have a wedding, you're going to have a reception, and at the reception, you're going to be selling liquor, or not selling, you're going to be giving it away. When you give away liquor, you're going to drink a lot more liquor than if you were buying it. So in turn, if you go to many receptions, you'll see a lot of people drinking and driving out. And, you know, that's, it's not good. So that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions of opposition or testimony? All right. From here, we will move into questioning of the applicant by the commission and for those who provided opposition testimony as well. Who has questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Davis?
Will the main entrance be off Floydsburg Road or off Cavanaugh Road?
The main entrance will be off Cavanaugh.
Pardon me?
It will be off Cavanaugh.
Be on Cavanaugh?
Yes.
All right. Further questions? Mr. Hampton?
I haven't been there for a while, but I'm fairly familiar. This is, will be still, there's no through traffic. It's still dead end, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Urban?
Hang on, Mr. Hampton.
If I can clarify, Mr. Andrew, there is a gravel path that connects these properties, but that is, that's gated, I believe, and it's to be cut off. There's not to be any through access at all. I just, I wanted to be complete there in my answer. Yes, sir.
Yes, you say short-term rental properties. How will people rent those? Only at a wedding event, or can they rent them anytime they want to?
They can rent them outside of an event, although we think that the majority of them will probably rent in some way associated with an event.
One second. Mr. Faalvi?
Well, I've said you could answer that question in rebuttal, but this would be a good time to answer Mr. Heitzman's question about noise level, if you haven't answered.
Yeah. Well, a couple, I guess a couple of things. It's, it's difficult to say what is disturbing to one person and maybe not disturbing to another person. I live not too far from a wedding venue that's across the street from my neighborhood. There are weddings there all, you know, during all temperate times, basically, and I've never really had a problem with it. Mr. Atkinson, who is with Crestwood Ventures, also lives on Cherry Lane, and he, as I mentioned before, also operates the 314 Exchange in Pee Wee Valley. They've had no complaints from weddings that have occurred there, from events that have occurred there. The area that, any amplified music would be probably in that tabernacle building, and it would be shielded to make sure that there is not a noise impact off-site. And we anticipate any amplification of anything would stop at 11:00 PM. Obviously, we know that there's a noise ordinance. We know that disturbing your neighbors is not a good way to stay in business, and you want to operate this facility in a way that it's, it continues to be an asset for the community.
Mr. Chairman, if I can follow up on what he's talking about. Do you have proposed days and hours of operation that could become a binding element on the conditional use? You just mentioned in by 11, but...
I do not, but I can probably compose one of those while we're here together.
A lot of times, we see conditional uses for event venues at the Board of Adjustments, and they'll have a listing of the time that amplified music will end, which is usually about an hour before people vacate the property. So if music ends by a certain time, an hour later for cleanup and everything, that's, if you can include that in your thoughts, that'd be a good thing.
And the one, there was one mention of people being over-served at these events or drinking too much. At 314 Exchange, Mr. Atkinson actually employs, employs the bartenders that are there. They're all well-trained. They're all trained to recognize people who've had too much, and obviously push them in the direction of a cab, an Uber, a Lyft, or get them a ride home. A lot of these events as well, I mean, have transportation as part of them. If you're a part of the bridal party or part of the, you know, the wedding party somehow, you're going to get in a van and then go back to a hotel if you're not staying on the property. So, and I think any decent caterer likewise trains their staff on how to recognize somebody who has had enough. We would anticipate that this, this property will operate in just the same way. And obviously, if you're talking about bartenders that are employed by the owner, that becomes the owner's liability. And so they're motivated more than anybody to make sure that people who shouldn't be on the road aren't.
Mr. Faalvi?
I've got a few questions.
Okay.
Is there going to be a full-time restaurant on the property?
No.
No restaurant? Just simply the dining hall for...
We anticipate the dining hall would be for a kind of a warming area. So initially, catering will be the source of food on the property.
So everything's catered?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm having a little problem with the term hotel.
Right.
And you say there'll be 12 rooms in this hotel?
12 rooms in the lodge building, yes.
And then how many other rooms will there be on the property?
So there's 12 rooms in the lodge building, and there are 1, 2, 3, 4 other short-term rental possibilities. So those would be larger parties.
16.
Yeah. Those would be larger parties, or you're renting a cottage. So you're not renting a room in the cottage, you're renting the cottage.
Okay. Of the rooms in the hotel?
Mm-hmm.
Are they going to have kitchens, or are they simply rooms?
They'll have kitchenettes.
Each one will have a kitchenette, then?
Yes.
The, this property, it's served by sewers, is not?
It is.
Yeah, okay. And city water, too, I believe.
Yes.
Is that correct?
I think that's correct, yeah.
If this is approved, will someone live on this property full-time?
No.
To monitor it, to...
Yeah. I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask my client to come up and answer that.
That's fine.
Let's get your name and address for the record, please.
It's Cory Atkinson, 6311 Cherry Lane, Pee Wee Valley. There will not be an onsite live-in property manager, but we do have a full-time property manager that presently manages the 314 Exchange that will take that same process to the proposed Cavanaugh, and she'll be onsite daily with, with an additional hand of help for managing the events.
So in the event something happens in one of the hotel rooms or the short-term rentals in the middle of the night, they're on their own?
Oh, no, sir. We have staff for that. So we presently own and operate two, I think Cliff maybe mentioned that, commercially-zoned Airbnb units in Pee Wee Valley. Over the past 16 months, we've likely had over 300 guests in between those two units. Obviously, things happen when people are staying overnight in our lodging. So we have a, we have a team of maintenance that are on call all night to, to serve those issues.
Let's see if that was it. So that's my questions for you all.
Thank you. Mr. Faalvi? Anyone else with questions? Ms. Nasser?
So I just wanted to clarify. There is the access from the Methodist Church Conference Center. There's kind of a little access road. Is that going to be used or not used, closed off? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. And then will Cavanaugh Lane ever cut through?
We have no plans for that at this point, no.
My question is back to the entrances. Will they be able to access the...
Can you get a little closer to your mic, please?
I mean, the road on Floydsburg Road, you're going to close that off?
Yeah.
And you won't be able to go that way? And what's the reason for that? Because that's a...
The property is not presently accessible by, by that entrance.
You can't get to Cavanaugh off of Floydsburg Road?
Off of Floydsburg. Well, it's, it's a, it's a dead end. At, at the end of that street is where a fairly thick wooded area starts.
What the property's going, what you're talking about, where you're going to develop that into what you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
Won't be able to access Floydsburg Road.
To my knowledge, it's never been used as an entrance to the property.
You will own that property, won't you, going to Floydsburg Road? Isn't that part of Cavanaugh?
That's correct. Uh-huh.
And why is it that it can't access that? Because it's just giving another access out of that. Like, the gentleman was saying, about 200 people leaving to go out onto LaGrange Road would not be an ideal situation, but if you could come out onto Floydsburg Road, wouldn't that have given a better access?
Can we get a shot of the site map back up here for better reference to...
That's got the...
It's always been an excess.
The building in the back. So the area, if I can...
Can I speak to that just?
Hang on one second. The area you're talking about, this is the path or the gravel that goes back to the back of the conference center on Floydsburg.
She's talking about this road right here.
You're talking about that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Ma'am, this is the access point that you're mentioning, correct?
That's Cavanaugh Lane?
Yes. Is that right?
Not to be confused with Cavanaugh Road.
Correct.
But it's always, the campgrounds has always had an access out of Floydsburg Road going in. It's a paved drive, a long paved driveway, right?
No, ma'am. I think there, there's a, there's a paved center that comes off of Floydsburg that goes to the modern conference center.
Will you put your cursor on that location for just a sec?
Yes.
That's right there.
This right here. So this would be that paved area that comes into this new conference center here. This Cavanaugh Lane, it dead-ends here, and the woods start. There is no indication, this is a fairly steep grade, where the property starts here, and there's no indication, just by way of the wooded area, that there's ever been an entrance at that part of the property to access any, anything.
Thank you.
All right. Please.
The first time I, the first time I came to the property, I went to the, to the Contemporary Center here, and you can get, you can get a little bit beyond the building, but not too far. And then between just overgrowth and fall, there's no, there's really no connection to be made there at all.
Plus, that's a separate property.
And that, yeah, that's a separate property. It's not, it's not part of our application today, and it's not going to connect.
Any potential roadway connection that might be considered there? Is it public or private?
That's private property, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Further questions? Mr. Ender?
Yes. I saw there's a, there's a pond here on the property. I'm assuming it originally was used for some, something part of the original camp. Will the, will the tenants for the short-term rentals have access to that?
If you could more narrowly define access. Will they be able to fish? Yes.
Fish, kayak?
Swim? No.
No. Okay.
Anything additional, Mr. Ender?
Nothing.
What is the maximum capacity you all expect for the event to be able to hold?
Mr. Winters, anything additional? Mr. Finney?
Just while we have the map up there, could you point out on the map the actual entrance and exit to, I guess, Highway 146, how that route goes?
Sure. This is, this is Cavanaugh. You would go, so the entrance off Cavanaugh is here. You go up, and then you pass the Methodist Church there, and you get up to 146.
Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Atkinson, I, for you, have a couple. Sorry, I'll be right there. Okay? So tell us about your experience with 314 Exchange. How long have you been in ownership with 314?
Sure. So we bought the 314 Exchange about a year and two or three months ago. It was an existing event venue. The, the owners of that venue had constructed an Airbnb. On top is a commercial zoning, so it was allowed. We took over ownership about a year and two or three months ago. When we purchased it, there wasn't much of a business model to it. My background is in real estate and construction, so I just saw it as an opportunity to take a really neat, I don't know if anyone's ever been there, but it's just a really neat historic venue with, with just a ton of nostalgia to it. So we purchased it. It was serving about 20 events per year at the time of acquisition. So we started to market. As I mentioned, Casey Friends, we hired her as a full-time property manager. She started networking with event coordinators, and we expect to do about 40 events in, in our next 12-month time in business. So as it was previously mentioned by Cliff, I, and I actually used to reside immediately across the street before owning the 314 Exchange. So the concern of, of noise volume, the previous owners had, had no restrictions to that, and, and I've suffered immensely with three young children as a result. So that is the reason why, at our current venue at, at 314, we have a noise ordinance where at 11:00 PM, any audible amplified music is cut off, and, and then people generally leave, you know, shortly thereafter, after the... And, and then people generally leave, you know, shortly thereafter, after the party stops. As far as Cliff mentioned this, and I think it would be helpful to articulate, the bartenders are not directly employed by us. They are contract bartenders. However, they are bartenders, four of six, that have been used for 10 years at the 314 Exchange and who we have sat down and extensively interviewed and trained with the purpose of mitigating liability for some of the reasons that were expressed. I live, I live in Crestwood, own other property in Pee Wee Valley. I love the Mayberry feel of Oldham County and it's something that I'm looking to invest in and, and preserve.
Thank you. You anticipated and answered my second question. That's all I have. Mr. Falvey?
And this may be a question for staff, but I do have, want to just qualify. You did say that any one of these wedding events or any of these events that you put there, capacity is 275 people?
At the proposed Kavanaugh event space, yes, sir. Our current capacity at the 314 Exchange is 120.
All right. Then my question would be to staff for about parking requirements for something like that.
I believe that the proposed parking that they have on the development plan is adequate for that.
So you think that parking is adequate? It's unmarked, it's gravel. How, what, how many people can park there?
In the testimony, they testified that they're gonna put tire stops and that will delineate where the parking is.
So how many parking spots did they get?
It's on the plan. I think they have 81 spaces. Is that right? Corey?
How many?
It's 120 parking spots.
120, sorry. I was reading the wrong line. 120.
And that's all on that one acre gravel parking area? Because there's no off-street parking.
That's correct, yes, sir.
That all you have, Mr. Falvey?
That's it.
Okay. Further questions? Very well. Thank you, Mr. Ashburner. We will move into rebuttal evidence by the applicant. Mr. Ashburner, I think you've already covered that ground, but I don't want to deny you the chance, okay? For those who provided testimony, questions in opposition, do you have anything in rebuttal to add to what was just covered? All right. Being none, I'll ask for a final statement from any of those who may be opposed. Being none, Mr. Ashburner, you are up.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for your time today. As I said before, the Kavanaugh is a special place. It is sort of a unique situation in Crestwood. And the redevelopment of a property like this is something that needs to be done carefully. I think that Crestwood Ventures has a good, solid plan for how to reuse this property by making minimal changes and allowing it to continue to be used for its assembly purpose and as an asset to the community. Some questions were raised about management and I think those have been answered adequately. And so I would ask that you, looking at our justification, looking at the staff's analysis, that you recommend approval of the rezoning, that you approve the development plan, the conditional use permit and?
The waiver.
The waiver for the parking lot, sorry, to allow us to retain that look and feel. So, yes, sir.
So if we'll hold there, we do need to give you an opportunity to assemble the conditions of approval language.
The event venue, and that's in particular, that would be?
Hours of operation and amplification.
So we're gonna hold public input open at the moment until we finish this and we will break. How long do you need?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? All right, we'll take a 10-minute break to give you sufficient time.
Give us one second here.
One more.
We don't have the record started up yet.
Okay.
Okay, ready to rip?
All right. So during the break, I was reminded of a couple of things that we wanted to cover. First, I want to address your question, Mr. Falvey, a little bit more about the operation of the short-term rental units. Hotel is the definition that's contained in the regulation, but the units on this property will operate in a substantially different way. People will not be able to arrive at the site without a reservation and get a room. In much the same way that any other short-term rental operates, you create a profile on a platform VRBO, Airbnb, FlipKey, something like that. The owner of the property then screens you to determine, do I want to lease my property to this person? Most of the platforms have a rating system, and so if you have stayed in another Airbnb unit, for instance, and you've done a good job, you've cleaned the unit the way you were supposed to clean the unit, you arrived on time, you were not a difficult person to maybe anybody else in the building, then you'll get a high rating. And owners can determine, I only want to rent to people with high ratings. And so I anticipate that the Cavanaugh will be one of those places where they're only going to lease to people who've already created a profile, who've already stayed in another short-term rental somewhere else, and have demonstrated that they're good guests. It's significantly different from, I'm on the road, I'm tired, you know, there's the Fairfield Inn, and if I've got a credit card, I've got a room. So I wanted to make that one distinction for you. Now, when it comes to some of the concerns that were raised about parking, one thing, Mr. Silman mentioned that this is sort of a difficult use to categorize when it comes to traffic and parking a little bit because, you know, there are some times when the parking's going to be fully utilized, sometimes when it's not. An analogous use was a church. And so looking at the requirements for a church and applying those to the tabernacle building really created the 120 requirement, which is what we have, or maybe it was less than 120, but what we have on the site. As I said, with wedding events, there are often group transportation opportunities for the wedding party, for others, and ride sharing. So we don't think the parking demand is really going to be quite as high as you might otherwise find. Now, with regard to conditions of approval, there's one that's already listed in the staff report concerning the permitted uses, that affirmative condition that's in the staff report. Two things that came up today that I want to address, one was the size of the events, and Mr. Atkinson testified that the maximum size of events would be 275 guests. And so we're willing to make that a condition as well. In addition to attempt to address the concern about off-site noise, we would propose that amplified music cease at 10:00 PM if not contained in a building, and 11:00 PM if it is, with the understanding that most often, the conclusion of the reception, whatever amplification is there, precedes the conclusion of the event and people clearing out of the property by about an hour. So the goal would be, even if you had a reception indoors, the music is indoors, most likely people will vacate the property by midnight. And obviously, well, not necessarily obviously, but it is true that a conditional use permit is a little bit different than a zone change, in the sense that ultimately, a zone change is a legislative act, and it takes an act of the legislature, the legislative body in this case being the City of Crestwood, to undo that. But a conditional use permit can be revoked. So violation of these conditions can put the entire business at risk. And I bring that to your attention because that is something that is unique to conditional use permits in our Commonwealth. So the conditional use permit is something that can be revoked, it does not require legislative action, it can be done through enforcement and a hearing. So with that, with those added conditions that I believe address the concerns that were raised today, I would ask that you, again, rely on our comprehensive plan, statement of compliance that we provided for you, the staff's testimony, Mr. Silman's testimony, the testimony you've heard today, and that you recommended the City of Crestwood, they approve the rezoning, that you approve the development plan, the conditional use permit, and the waiver for the parking. And thank you very much for your time and attention today.
Thank you. Mr. Ashburner, Mr. Urban, will you give us a moment here to, or will you do the recap and recite what conditions then we have for consideration?
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be appropriate at this point, since Mr. Ashburner presented new evidence to allow those that are here in opposition, if they have questions about the hours or those things, to raise those questions. I know he gave his closing statement, but I think that the intention was to allow them the opportunity to question him about it, and then obviously, you all can ask your questions.
Thank you, fair statement. Anyone wish to provide any additional input in connection with that, which Mr. Ashburner just delivered? Anyone on the commission? Oh, please, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm interested in the hours along with the days that they would operate. As I mentioned earlier, they are having a lot of weddings during the weekdays, and because the weekend venues are usually filled up.
Thanks for your question. We intend for this to be a seven-day-a-week operation. I can only speak to the experience that we've had in Pee-wee Valley. Ninety-five percent of our weddings are on Friday and Saturday nights. I think the uniqueness and the destination desire of this property will likely bring church churches to do some types of retreats, men's and women's retreat. And so, you know, considering that possibility, it is likely that we would use the venue Monday through Thursday in more ways than we do presently at the 314 Exchange. Obviously, audible amplified music would not be present during those times.
Thank you. Mr. Cottle, anything additional? Thank you. All right. Anyone from the commission, any additional input there? Mr. Falvey?
And just a clarification, it could be things other than weddings, right? It could be anything.
By definition, it's an event venue, it doesn't specifically say a wedding venue.
Yeah, it can be other events, other than weddings. The fact that you've got a tabernacle there sort of steer you toward weddings.
Again, just from experience at the 314 Exchange, baby showers, kids' birthday parties are among some of the other things other than the weddings that we do.
Mr. Falvey, anything additional? Anyone else? Counsel, are we good to close?
We are, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Urban, can you recap for us, please?
Sure. So you actually have four decisions. One is a recommendation that you're going to make today, and Brian's going to put up on the screen. We haven't really talked in great detail about this, but the first one is a recommendation of the City of Crestwood for either approval or denial of the zoning map amendment. And there are binding elements associated with that. Typically, we don't put binding elements on a zoning map amendment, but we're going to say that it, really, there should be no changes to the development plan or zoning map as presented at the July 25, 2023, Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing, without review or approval of the commission. The second one is that we made a list of permitted and conditional uses, because there are some going to a C2 zoning classification, there are some uses in C2 that we felt would potentially be egregious, and so we made a list, and I think that the applicant and their attorney has reviewed this list. One of the things that unfortunately got left off the list you're seeing on the screen is hotel motel, because that's essentially what that lodge is going to be used for. So there is a binding element that the C2 Community Business District on the subject property shall be limited to the following permitted or conditional uses. Remember, a conditional use, if they were going to use one of those, it would have to go to the Board of Adjustments, which is a public hearing. So it is, the permitted uses from the long list of C2, allow permitted uses are limited to agricultural uses, farmers' markets, riding academies and stables, retail and personal establishments with gross floor area less than 50,000 square feet, adult day centers, colleges and schools that are not-for-profit, and hotel motel. Now, I didn't hear any evidence that they were going to have a retail operation that was going to be 50,000 square feet, but remember, that would change the development plan if they did. So we're going to get to that when we start talking about your decision on the development plan. Then the conditional uses are veterinary hospitals and kennels, marinas or boat rentals, hospitals and institutions, private clubs, country clubs, golf courses, except miniature courses or commercial driving ranges, and then cemeteries, mausoleums, and crematories. So if they were interested in doing anyone listed in the conditional use category, again, it would be a public hearing in front of the Board of Adjustments, and probably even require that they come back and change the development plan in front of the Planning Commission. So, Brian, did you have anything to add to that?
No.
Before we get into the, talking about the motion for either approval or denial, I want to, I do want to state, you know, and you heard Brian say this in his staff report, originally, we were thinking on a staff level that the lodge was a short-term rental. I mean, that's really what, as they just explained, what they're going to use it for. It's not a typical drive-up, go in, check in and get a room when you didn't have a reservation. It is really short-term rentals. We were going to go through this as a conditional use, and I want to thank the applicant for understanding that at the last minute, we rethought this and said, this is really a change in zoning. It really does fit more into the category of hotel and motel. They had already had a neighborhood meeting, and Brian and I went to the second one that they had, just to explain to the neighbors, there were a lot more people there with a lot more questions, that this wasn't some kind of switch and bait, or it wasn't just a change. Their intention all along has been to use this property the way they presented today. But again, at the, kind of at the last minute, we decided that it really was necessary to change the zoning for the lodge to be used as a short-term rental. So with that, in your packet, as always, on page four, your first consideration is a recommendation to the City of Crestwood on the zoning map amendment, and you need to make sure that you give reasons why you believe it's appropriate. There is, in the staff report, a copy of the applicant's justification statement that's in the back of the staff report, you know, last page or so. You can rely on that in terms of whether or not you agree with the statements on how they comply with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. So that's your first decision is on the zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Any questions from the commission? Looks like none. We'll move into, we'll go ahead and open the floor for a motion on the zoning map amendment request. Again, this is a recommendation to the City of Crestwood. Ms. Nasser.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation to, on the zoning map amendment to the City of Crestwood for docket PZ 23014. This, the zoning currently as it is, does not comply with the prior use and future use of this. It fits in keeping with that prior use. Moving to the suggested zoning of C2 will fit within the past and present and future use of this property.
Thank you, Ms. Nasser. Mr. Baxter.
I think that's adequate, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Mr. Finney, thank you.
We need to include these, well, we need to include these two binding elements. Again, there'd be no changes to the requested zoning map amendment and development plan as presented at the July 25, 2023, Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing, without review and approval of the commission. And number two is that the C2 Community Business District on the subject property shall be limited to the following permitted and conditional uses, according to the chart that you have up on the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Ms. Nasser, do you accept that?
I accept those binding elements.
And Mr. Finney is the second. Thank you. All right. Discussion, commission? Looking like none, we will move into a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar.
Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hafling?
No.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
No.
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the request for zoning map amendment recommendation, the City of Crestwood has passed on a vote of seven to three. Mr. Urban?
Okay. So then, next up for your consideration is whether or not the conditional use for the event venue is appropriate. There's on page five, a suggested motion, and continues on to page six, for either approval or denial. You heard offering, if you're inclined to consider approving the conditional use, that the attorney's applicant has stated that the conditions of approval would include a couple of things. So I'm going to read, the conditional use shall only apply to the application considered at the July 25, 2023, Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. The second one is that the hours of operation shall include no amplified music after 10:00 PM if not enclosed in a building, and after 11:00 PM if it's inside a building, and that the events end by 12:00 PM. And then the third is that the maximum number of people at an event would be 275.
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
I just want to make sure, Cliff, did I state that correctly?
Thank you. All right. Any questions before we move into motion making? Floor will be open.
I hope I said PM.
Intended PM. Ah, good point.
Oh, yes. 11:59 PM, how's that? That way, we don't split ears on what it is. Yep, 11:59 PM. It's very clear that way.
All right, everybody get that.
It would be 12:00 AM, right.
All right. Floor will be open for a motion on the conditional use. Ms. Nasser?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use as presented today for docket PZ 23-014. It complies with the current use of the, past use of the property. It is going to keep with the integrity and character of the area that it sits. They have additional conditional uses that comply with the consideration for the community in its surrounding area. I propose attaching the additional binding elements as mentioned by Jim Urban.
Thank you, Ms. Nasser. Mr. Baxter.
Mr. Chairman, give me just a second.
Yes, sir.
That's adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Mr. Hampton? Discussion? We will move into a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Davis?
No.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
No.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hafling?
No.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion to approve conditional use is requested, it's passed on a vote of six to four. Mr. Urban, next up.
Well, the next two decisions are related to the development plan, and the first is whether or not to approve the parking lot waiver that it, in relation to section 280 150, number three, that parking areas for non-residential uses that are located between a public street and a principal building on the parcel shall be paved. There's a sample motion on page six in your packet, and the, you don't need to put any conditions on this, you just would either vote in favor or against the parking lot waiver.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Any questions? Mr. Finney?
Do we need to add that the handicap need to be paved?
Well, it's on the development plan, and when you get to approving the development plan, if you approve the development plan, you heard testimony that they would pave, and it is in the, listed in the development plan. And when I get there, there's also some statements on that development plan that you'll be approving that are really conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
All right, for the questions? All right, floor is open. Waiver for parking lot. Mr. Finney?
For docket PZ 23014, I move for approval, the parking lot waiver, as outlined today, there'd be no further additions of, conditions of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Mr. Baxter?
Adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ender, thank you. We'll move into a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Davis? Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
No.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hafling?
No.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion for approval of the parking lot waiver as requested has been approved on a vote of six to four. Mr. Urban?
All right. The final decision is on the development plan, and again, there's a motion to either approve or deny. The development plan listed in your staff report is one condition of approval, and that is that the development plan approval shall only apply to the application considered at the July 25, 2023, Oldham County Planning Commission meeting. Now, on the development plan itself, there are notes, and a couple of these, if you choose to approve the development plan, become binding. I'm going to go ahead and read them. The second item, parking striping shown is for informational purposes only, existing gravel shall remain, the handicap accessible spaces shall be paved, all parking spaces shall have wheel stops. Another one is that a three-foot gravel shoulder shall be added to the roadway on the side of the subject property between the existing side entrance and the intersection of Cavanaugh Road and Cavanaugh Extension. You heard testimony that the applicant was going to do that on their side of the street. Another one is that per ASHTO guidelines for geometric design of low-volume roads, second edition, a minimum stopping site distance of 155 feet shall be provided at the proposed entrance in conformance with the standards for 25 mile-per-hour roadways. Existing vegetation, like the trees and shrubs, shall be removed or cut back by the developer, a minimum of 10 feet from the edge of pavement to ensure clear sight, line of sight is provided in compliance with the minimum 155-foot requirement. This clear line of sight shall be maintained in perpetuity while the entrance is being utilized. In addition, a quote-unquote hidden entrance or hidden drive warning sign shall be installed 250 feet south of the proposed entrance. Signage shall be reviewed and approved by the county engineer prior to installation. Signage shall be reviewed and approved by the county engineer prior to installation. We didn't hear much about that in the presentation today, but it was reviewed by the county engineer's office.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Any questions? Being none, we'll move into motion-making for the development plan. The floor is now open. Mr. Ender?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion per applicant PZ-23-014. Based on testimony and evidence presented here today, I move to approve the development plan because it complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Suggested conditions of approval, the development plan approval shall only apply to the applicant's, application considered at the July 25, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission meeting. Additionally, I would like to include the binding elements presented by Jim Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Ender. Mr. Baxter?
Adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Elder, thank you. We'll move into a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar.
Ms. Walzer? Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hafling?
No.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
No.
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion to approve development plan has passed on a vote of six to four. All right. We're going to take a few minutes between this and the next docket. We give it 10 minutes, everyone? Is it going to be adequate amount of time? Just five or cents, you had, damn it. Oh, we'll go with...